Good evening, everyone. This is Thursday, February 20th at 7:00, and it's the Hingham Selectmen's Meeting. Our agenda this evening, this is our second meeting this week, is to have a public hearing on the transfer of an all-alcoholic common victual license from Nino's Steakhouse to the Quarry Restaurant. A public hearing on the application of Stars on the Hingham Harbor for a change of manager from Edward Kane to James Hodgson. Then we'll have a rather extensive session on the capital outlay recommendations. And then we'll hear a series of Warren articles in preparation for this April's town meeting, how to proceed with unclaimed checks, and amend the bylaw and procedures at town meeting, and a discussion about a proposed electronic voting pilot program. And then an intermunicipal agreement with some of the neighboring towns on recycling. This evening's meeting, I should advise in advance that next week, the Board of Selectmen will be having an executive session with some of the neighboring towns, Cohasset and Hull concerning the Hingham Water Company, and that will be at a regular hour. So our meeting next week will probably not be televised until 8:30 p.m., so that you, those of you who sit in waited breath for this event, you have till 8:30, so you can have an extra cocktail.
Or two.
Or two. Thank you. Thank you for that. The other issue that we have coming, we have a couple of other issues coming up, and I want to mention to all of the folks at large, we're planning that on Sunday, March 2nd, here at the Sanborn Auditorium, we will hold, as has been our practice for the last year, in a discussion called the Town Forum, which will deal in advance with some of the Warren articles that will be forthcoming at town meeting. So to give you an opportunity, those of you who come, to ask questions about not only the articles on the agenda, but any other articles that you might find of interest and want to get more information about. So I hope you all can attend that Sunday, March 2nd, here in the Sanborn Auditorium.
What time is it?
It's at 2:00. Thank you. Thank you, Carol. Yes. At 2:00, Sunday, March 2nd. Okay. So we'll start with the hearing for Nino's Steak and Chop House. Have a seat, and just since you're televised, would you kindly introduce yourself to the folks at home? That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm probably the only one here on this table that's going to go eat there. Give me the menu.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Julie Leduke, and to my right is my partner, Greg Jordan. And we are petitioning you today for the transfer of a license from Nino's Chop House to our Corporation 415 Whiting Street. The name of our restaurant will be called The Quarry. What you have in front of you is a packet that includes my resume, Greg's resume, our menu, both of our alcohol service tips awareness tests that we have taken, and the floor plan for our dining room.
Okay. Are you going to make some changes? Is that the...
Just some minor, not anything major.
Okay.
I grew up in South Waymouth, right on the Hingham line, and I started my first job at Dunkin' Donuts in Hingham. Worked there from when I was 14 till I was about 19. And from there, I went to Chili's in Hingham, so not too much further up the street.
Okay.
And that's where I first kind of regained my taste of being in the restaurant industry. And I loved it. It's always been my dream to open my own restaurant. From there, I worked for 10 years for Rare Hospitality as a manager, and my primary focus was on training and development. So did a lot of alcohol training, a lot of food service training for managers, as well as servers, kitchen staff, things like that. So I'm really pleased to have started on this venture, and I'm looking forward to making The Quarry a reality. Now I'm going to have to introduce Greg, and he's going to explain to you our menu, and go from there.
Okay, great. Thank you, Julie. Great. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello there. The menu is going to be a new American cuisine with a strong Italian influence. It's going to be important to us to work with local vendors for shellfish, produce, dairy, as much from the area as we can, do a nice scratch preparation, make everything in-house, and bring real quality dining to the South Shore.
Good. Great. Okay. Any questions, Irma?
Well, welcome. Now, are you open now, or is...
No, Nino's is actually still open. Yes. Until we're able to transfer the license, we can't actually purchase the property. So...
Well, Greg, you've worked at some very nice, is upscale the word I'm looking for?
It is.
Restaurants in Boston. That's great. Well, it'd be wonderful to have the two of you here, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
This is great. Thank you. Great.
Paul?
I was in Providence and Federal Hill this afternoon, enjoyed the Italian fare there. Looks like I won't have to travel as far, so that's a good thing. Wish you the best of luck, and I'm glad that you've progressed and decided to make your future here in Hingham. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
That's good. That's great.
I like the name.
We thought it was appropriate, since it sits on a quarry.
Sits in a quarry.
Kind of made more sense.
It's about 50 feet.
Yeah, about that.
Yeah, you want to make the right turn when you come out. I know.
Absolutely. We're going to have valet, so you don't have to make the turn at all.
That's good. Okay. Any questions from the public? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Okay. Mr. Haley?
I'll move then that we approve the transfer of an all-alcoholic common victual license from Nino's Steak and Chop House, LLC. Nino Cognale, manager, to The Quarry Restaurant. Julie A. Leduke, manager, and to approve the pledge of license.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look at our faces, you'll see us soon.
Look forward to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is transfer of manager at Kay's Harbor Corporation. Hello. Good evening. Good evening. You tell the folks at home where you are, where you're...
I'm Jim Hodgston. Work for Eat Well Incorporated, Stars, Tosca, and Cafe Tosca.
Okay. So you're taking over from Ed Kane? Is that the...
Correct. Yep.
But corporate ownership is not changing, just the manager?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
That takes care of that. You're tips trained, and you're up to speed on all of the legal...
Yes, I am. I've been with Eat Well since 96. I've been the Director of Operations for the corporation since 98. And I've been a tips trainer, I'm tips certified, so I've been running the show there for quite some time.
Okay. Irma?
So now you're moving into the manager's role for Stars?
I have, I'm the Director of Operations, so I'm always on property. My office, I don't know if you guys know this, but it's right here. So we're, I'm there, you know, 60, 70 hours a week. I'm always there.
Excellent. I'm fine.
Okay. Paul?
You know, welcome aboard. Hope you maintain the present quality that I have enjoyed there for many years.
Thank you.
That's very good. Okay. Any questions from the public? Hey, Irma, would you be kind enough...
Okay. Make a motion to approve the request of Kay's Harbor Corp. doing business as Stars on Hingham Harbor for a change of manager from Edward Kane to James L. Hodgson.
Second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Jim, good luck.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Eisenbees. Next item on the agenda, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, but no, we're not. We're actually right on time for a change, to hear from the Chair of the Capital Outlay Committee on his proposed recommendations for the capital plan. I should add that traditionally, we hear these recommendations tonight, and that gives us a week or so to digest them, and then make a vote sometime in the next week or so. So we welcome you back. Thank you for your good work, and we thank your committee, because this is, I understand this year, you guys were trying to rebuild Manhattan, and a whole bunch of other things came through, so...
It doesn't get easier.
No. That's the word. So thank you for all that good work and dealing with...
We appreciate it. Thank you very much. And I'm Ray Eisenbees. As Bruce said, I'm Chairman of the Capital Outlay Committee. I live at 35 Highview Drive. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce the other members of the Capital Outlay Committee. We've got Lucy Hancock, Libby Claypool, Brendan Kiernan, and we've got, and then a worthy member is Gene Montgomery, Treasurer of the Town. And Craig McKay is a representative of the Advisory Committee. He cannot be here tonight. But he certainly was an active and willing participant in the proceeding. Before I begin with the 2015 recommendations, I'd like to add a little perspective, and I do this every year, to give you some sense for the magnitude of the capital outlay requests compared to what has historically been funded in the last couple of years. During the last five years, capital requests have averaged about $3.7 million each year. Some years, they're lower, particularly during the difficult times. But then, in many years, they continued increase. Now, excluding 2010, when we virtually funded no capital expenditures, the town is funded on average of about $1,007,000 of capital expenditures. Now, this gap, this $2 million gap, doesn't go away. It gets pushed further down time. So what's happened is, is the, there's an ever-growing list of deferred capital expenditures. And as a result, case in point here, we have $5 million of capital expenditures that were requests on our plate at the beginning of this process this year. Now, I'm not saying that it's not a good idea to prudently manage capital expenditures. We do it in our businesses, and we do it in our homes. However, the situation has become a bit acute. So, you know, the town, Capital Outlay Committee, is increasingly forced to make difficult decisions among very worthy projects, so that, so, but that's part of the process, and we deal with it. The recommended 2015 capital plan that you'll hear, I think, is a reasonable approach. You'll see that our recommendations are larger than in previous years. However, the gap will still exist. And before I begin, I'd like to recommend that as the town looks at the budget process in future years, the assumed appropriation for capital outlays should be increased. Currently, if you look at the budget package, there is a placeholder of $2 million for capital outlay. And we're recommending that each year, that this number be increased incrementally in order to deal with the reality. I know the town administrator and I talked about this. I can't speak for Ted, but I think he believes that the idea has merit.
If you want, I'll interject. We're having a forecast meeting next week. We're still working on the scheduling of it, and one of the issues I intend to bring on the table for the forecast group is the out-years on capital outlay. It is apparent that, you know, 2 million is not going to be enough long-term. And also, it's the one area of the forecast where we haven't done any inflation work. So it's unrealistic to think that $2 million of capital in 19, sorry, 2009 is going to be the same volume of work in 2029. And so we're going to need to start adjusting that.
Yeah. I think, and if I may interject, we had a discussion last week on the price of fire engines. We had a discussion on the increased costs to the proposed bridge down at the harbor caused by increases. Of course, all this assumes, so that we're clear, it assumes that there's no impact on revenue detrimental to our ability to fund it.
Correct.
Yeah. So that's not a bad opportunity to review. So I don't know, any of, either of you have a comment?
Actually, I'd like to echo what Ray is saying, because I started on capital in 2002, and from about 2003 onward, we said the base money we needed each year to fulfill replacement schedules, and this is base, and the town has grown, and our asset base has grown, was $2 million a year. And we need to increase that $2 million to reflect the asset base that we have now, and to allow us to better manage the facilities that we have now. So, yes, I agree.
Okay. Paul?
Nothing in this time-reserving comment.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think the most important issue, again, as many of you know, I'm an amateur economist, that I think I'm going to go professional because of the, the numbers are very confusing, and all you have to do is read the comments out of the Federal Reserve, and you see that there's a split there as to the future. And whatever they go through is what we go through. So we just need to be sensitive to it. We all recognize the pressures that we're under, and that, that doesn't, the need doesn't go away, it's just how do we pay for it? That's the issue.
Got it. It makes sense.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, no, appreciate it. It's good to hear your perspective on this. So what I'd like to do is now jump into our recommendations for 2015. What I'd like to do is, is I'll give you the bottom line first, so that you know where we're coming out, and then you'll have that perspective, and then double back and look at the individual items and the individual departments. But please, I would invite the Selectmen, while I'm going through each department, to please, you know, don't hesitate to ask questions. It gets, it helps when it's interactive. As I said, bottom line first, and I trust that people have access to, people watching this have access to this document?
I don't know that they can see it.
No, they don't have access, so...
Okay. So then I should read each one of the items?
Yes. Yeah, I think, maybe start with the total, and if there's a...
Great. Okay.
We've given copies to the press, so, but there you go.
Okay, good. The bottom line is this, as I said, the total, the request totaled almost $5 million one, and we're recommending capital projects of $4,7839. Now, of this, $2,214,922 would be funded by the tax levy, $72,000 would be funded by user fees, the mooring permits, $1,391,417 would be funded by borrowing. Of this amount, $191,417 would be funded from South Shore Country Club revenue, like to strike that difference. And then user rates and charges is the last source of funding of $329,500. So total funding of $4,7839 matching capital projects. So I'd like to start with the, with the accounting MIS.
Ray, if I could, what was last year's or this year's number relative to that, so the folks at home? Do you know that?
Sure. I've got it right here. Yeah, last year, the total funding was $2,091,422. So you can see this is quite a jump. And the funding sources were tax levy was $1,509. I'm going to round. The fund balance, which, again, mooring permits, $41,000. We used a trust fund, proceeds in the workman's comp, trust fund to fund part of those expenditures. And user rates and charges funded $422,500 worth of capital expenditures.
Okay.
So, as you can see, the order of magnitude is considerably different. So the, so back to the 2015 plan, accounting MIS, we are recommending that information technology assets in the amount of $80,500 be funded, and this represents basically 20% replacement. The department tries to, to, you know, replace 20% of the information technology assets. Another expenditure that we are recommending is the website redesign, in the amount of My understanding is that the website really hasn't been essentially upgraded for about 10 years, and although it's, I think it's nice, I think that the functionality could be improved, and I think that's in the plans for the IT folks. And the last item is, we're recommending $6,000 to install a new SPAM antivirus firewall. As I said, that's $6 million. That replaces the existing, replaces and enhances the existing firewall. So the recommendation for the accounting MIS department is $131,198.
On the SPAM firewall, is that licenses, or is that right to use?
It's, that's the front license, and then there is an ongoing fee of...
Monthly, yearly?
Actually, a piece of equipment.
Okay.
It's a physical piece of equipment.
It's got software in it?
Yeah.
That's right. And then there's a license each year that...
Okay. Thanks.
I think the license is built into the operating budget, and you saw this year in the operating budget, there's a fairly big increase in licenses, and that's part of the issue. The SPAM is becoming a very big problem for us organizationally, so...
The town hall. We are recommending replacement of cooling towers. Apparently, the cooling tower was installed in 1997, and we are at or exceeding the economic life. But in addition, the repair expenses have become significant, and is actually in poor condition. And so as a result, it makes sense to replace that. We're also recommending $41,750 to replace four HVAC rooftop units. Again, there have been difficulties with other units, and it's, it's better to plan for this as part of an ongoing program. And finally, we're recommending $20,000 for the normal renovations and repairs of the town hall.
Why so much money invested in town hall when there's a pending, maybe, kind of, sorta redo of town hall somewhere in the, maybe three to five years out?
Well, we thought that, I mean, the cooling towers, you know, are not on the building themselves, and they're behind it. And from what we understand, as we talked about it, they're not in, if there are any proposed modifications to town hall, they're not in the way for that. And then the reality of the rooftop HVAC units is, I think one failed, so, you know, they're reaching their, their point. It's sort of pay me now or pay me later, not to use a trite phrase.
Betty, I think you spoke with Tom Carey, who's working on the redesign of this building, and he indicated that those were likely, very likely to stay in any remodel.
Yes. Both the cooling tower and the rooftop units would...
They stay.
Would stay.
Okay.
And we did have one rooftop unit that did fail this year, and we had to get the crane in to replace one.
Okay.
So the total for the town hall is $161,750. The next apartment is the GIR Hall, and we're recommending $42,000 to reshingle the roof. Now, they are, the hall is also going through painting that was funded through the CPC, and there may be able to be some cost savings, because they've got, they've got the scaffolding there, they could use it for both purposes. So this 42 may be in excess of what they actually would use. And then we're recommending installation of $5,000 for granite property bounds.
Why?
Because of the fact that apparently that there are some issues with the neighbors encroaching on the property.
Okay. We put metal rods in to mark the bounds last year, and they're not there now. Granite bounds, it is.
And we're also recommending an air conditioning condenser for $18,000. There are, we spent a lot of time discussing this item. Our thought was, though, that given the number of artifacts stored there, that the heat, oppressive heat in the summer will, you know, it will do two things. It'll, it'll impact the artifacts, and also, it precludes them from having meetings in the summer, it's just so hot there. So I think, from our perspective, this made sense.
It looks, if I may, when I look out at future years, we don't anticipate any other expenses, so this will get them pretty much up to speed for...
Whenever I see a capital plan that has something in the current year and nothing in the next five years, I make a mental note to sit with Betty, and we have to do another review of this, to make sure that there's nothing in there. I find it hard to believe that we're going to go five years at Jerr Hall without another issue of some level. So part of it is going through the asset management stuff that Betty's been working on, and identifying some systems to make sure that we think they are going to last that period of time.
Having, again, been on capital and advisory in CPC, there has been a steady stream of money. It's, it's an old building, it's a beautiful building, it's a historic building. It's highly unlikely that zero in the outer years. But there would be, this would be a candidate from some CPC money also.
The next department is the Police Department, that includes the Harbor Master. We're recommending a continuation of the station remodeling that was started last year, however, not at the amount that they had asked for. They had originally asked for $17,000, but after conversations with them, the, the amount was scaled back to $5,000 because of the fact that for, so that it would remove some of the old radio equipment from there, so that they could then use that for meeting rooms for clients of the Police Department.
Is this the old dispatch center?
Correct. Yeah, they, they had spent $21,000 in 2014, and this is a continuation of that project, however, scaled back. And also, as part of the normal replacement schedule of police vehicles, we're recommending $216,000 for replacement of six vehicles, and they're adding one new vehicle because of the fact that they've increased the complement of police officers, and they need that extra.
Is it a black and white?
Yes.
Was, was, just for discussion purposes, was there any discussion as to the type of vehicles we should be purchasing? There's been considerable discussion in police environments about what do you need? We used to use Crown Victorias when they were the car of choice. I'm sorry, Paul.
It wasn't horse and buggy, was it, Paul? Paul, you told me it was horses and buggies.
Depends.
So just curious, I mean, I know there's been a lot of discussion about whether or not that's the vehicle of choice for the future.
Well, I think that a number of the most recent purchases have been the small SUVs that are designed for the purpose. And there was also, also some talk about, about acquiring some of the specially-designed Ford units, not SUVs, but cruisers.
Right.
But, but my understanding is that the most recent ones have been the SUVs.
Okay.
We did, and the case in point, they said that apparently Waymouth had purchased some SUVs without four-wheel drive, and during the recent snow, they've just having a lot of difficulty getting around.
Was there any discussion of a wagon?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Is it a transport?
Yeah. Well, the SUVs have a little, you know, as you know, they've got some additional space in the back, so, but no, we did not have that conversation when, when we had their presentation.
In talking to Mike about at the drill, they seem to like the SUVs because they now have to carry so much equipment. And they're like a walking PC station that the SUVs give them more room. And it's easier to put out all the electronic equipment that they now use.
And the smaller units are harder to put in reluctant prisoners.
I can imagine, yeah.
No, and if we ever, I'll say something that's anathema. That's my theology.
Can you spell that? I can't.
You know, the question has been discussed from time to time as occasionally there may be need to have to transport other officers or emergency technicians or something in the vehicles. And it would seem to me that an SUV would, you know, allow that to happen. So that seems to be a reasonable choice, yeah.
The third item is the Police Department would like to replace 10 defibrillators for $20,000.
Are they all the same age?
They've got them staged, yes. They're, yeah, they've got them staged so that they won't be the same age.
Yeah, Mike mentioned that, that that was a change that they had made to me. He mentioned to me that they're trying to spread this out because it's otherwise too big a hit. And you need them when you need them.
Yeah. And also recommended bulletproof vests, 40, replacement of those. Apparently, there is a life to those vests.
Yes. Was there any discussion of a Baker Bat ballistic shield?
No.
What's that?
Not during our presentation.
It's a shield that can be used in the kind of exercise that occurred at the middle school this week. I was just curious.
And now three items for the Harbor Master. And these would be funded from mooring fees. Fiber equipment to run a fiber optic cable from Beale Street to the shipyard in anticipation of the build out there in the new terminal. And included in that was 50.
So what we're going to do is try to grab the INET that we have throughout town that we negotiated with the cable, with Comcast. And it links up all our municipal buildings. And we're essentially trying to link up the new Harbor Master's office that'll be in the intermodal center to that with enough data so that he can utilize the camera technology that they're going to give them.
Could we use cable money for that instead of capital money?
I would, you know, it's not a build out of the INET for, my understanding is the capital money's not allowed to be used for the build out of the INET. So the only issue would be whether or not they're going to run some type of program over there.
Yeah, I think in the agreement we signed, you're talking about the HCAM money? Is that what?
No, no, there's cable money that comes in for equipment.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we could ask the question, but I think it's inconsistent with the uses of the end result of what cable wants to do. But I'll ask for you.
Great. And then the additional Harbor Master items, I believe I talked about the office furniture for $15,000. This, it's saying office furniture, but it's cabinet, it's a little more than that. And also for $15,000 and then more, replacement of moorings for $7,000. So the total for the Police Department would be $333,000. Fire Department. The first item on there is the replacement of two of the fire engines for a million and two. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about this, including, it was also recommended by a study committee that where the chief worked with that committee and recommended that these two units be replaced. And these will be financed as opposed to come out of tax.
Right, we voted that.
Yes, good. There also had asked is a way to save a bit of money to rebuild Medic 7 engine for $30,000. Does that make sense from our perspective? And also the rest of the, the next items here is fire hydrants and hose. And typically, this $27,000 is recurring through each year. They're on a schedule to replace the fire hydrants and to a lesser degree, the hose. Also, they've asked for turnout gear, replacement of nine sets for $18,000. And finally, they've requested a striker, replacement of a striker stretcher. Apparently, this is very helpful to the firemen getting into tough spaces without incurring back injuries.
That's money well spent.
And the total that we're recommending for the Fire Department is a million 290,500.
I notice in the outer years, there's a million dollars each for each of the redos of the stations. Is that a, is that a good number?
I think it's a placeholder.
Okay. Because I had heard a half a million. So we're looking at a million?
I think right now it's a placeholder. We're working through, right now through North Station to try to come up with cost estimates for that one first.
I mean, we funded in past years the feasibility studies, so they could use that money.
Well, this has been on, again, since 2002.
The next, the next item is the Public Works Engineering. And the first item on here is the Derby Street Design. As you know, that this is the, is funds to design of, and actual permitting for roadway improvements for the Derby Street Corridor that runs from Pond Park Drive to Cushing Street. And I know that you're very well familiar with this, but I'm saying it for the audience here and members that will be watching. And this will complete the funding because the town has contributed funds already for this project. But this will complete the engineering studies such that it can be submitted to the state for their approval of this project. Apparently, the project, the scope is such that the estimated cost would be $4.2 million that will be covered by the state if they approve it. So once this, you know, once the studies are completed, they'll be in a position to go to the state for approval. I understand they've had some preliminary discussions with the state, and the state is favorably disposed to do this.
Yes. If I can just add a couple of points on this. Not only is the state favorably proposed to do it, but this project actually goes past Cushing and all the way down to Garner. And the state picked up 100 percent of those engineering costs. You can look at the numbers. I mean, if you look at the out-years, which I wanted to point out to you, you know, we have the Route 3A road design in here. And I know that the homeowners in that area are very much interested in, that the town is starting to focus on that. And here is the first manifestation of that. And you can look, you know, we're looking at $200,000, two consecutive years for an area that's much smaller in scope than the Derby Street. So, you know, the work that Roger's done with the state has been great, and the state's really stepped up to the plate to help out.
No, they have been, no, they've been very consistent. Once we designated that as our priority, they've been very supportive of us.
So we're responsible for design, and then they do the construction side of it.
That doesn't happen on 3A, though.
No, not yet.
Not yet.
This will go out to bed, I assume?
The design and engineering work won't because it's already with, I understand, with a firm. But of course, the Route 3A would.
Okay, is it the firm that was in here?
CHA, isn't it?
CHA.
The old Colletonia?
Yep.
Okay. So the total for Public Works Engineering is the $112,000. Public Works Highway. We've got a number of items here. The first item is Burr Road Fence Installation. Apparently, the fence that is there is in terrible shape. It should be replaced. So we're recommending $7,000 to do that. And then there are three vehicles here. A truck, a knuckle boom, and administrative vehicle for $30,000, $177,800, and $34,500 There are clearly replacements to existing equipment. And the knuckle boom is important because apparently there's a safety issue because the boom is old and not operating properly. So that's why they're interested in replacing it as well.
Is that used for the tree removal and trimming?
Yeah. And then, and then there are items on here, the Browns Master, I wouldn't call them lawn mowers, they're glorified lawn mowers, they're tractors. And they had originally talked about replacing two of them. And as we talked with Randy about the project, he said that as an alternative, he could save some money and still have some good usage of the equipment if he would replace one, if he would just buy a brand-new mower and repair the other two. That would give him a replacement, less wear and tear, and apparently, as they get increasingly requests to do mowing. So that would save, that alternative saves about $40,000.
Can the administrative vehicle be used by somebody else? Is that one pretty beat up?
Yeah, they're very effective when they talk to us. They come in with the pictures. So I mean, there is no question, when they talk about replacing something, it needs to be replaced. I don't know who drives it. That's up to them to decide.
You're referring to the new one or the old one? The new, the replacement or the vehicle that's leaving?
No, I'm saying, all of the ones that are leaving are beat up.
When they leave the DPW, or as you all know, some of that, I mean, I think the truck that we gave the Bear Cove Park, we had to find a seat for it because there was nothing left of the front seat.
Well, that's, I'm wondering if there's another one we could give to Bear Cove Park because Scotty's truck is, how shall I say, limping along.
You know, this is a 2001, so.
Well, I think it's better than what he's got right now.
This one probably isn't suitable to be transferred because this, as I understand it, is a SUV.
And I assume the three-quarter ton truck might be the one that like lost the back end a few weeks ago?
I can't, I can't tell you. We saw, they were still on the road when we saw the pictures. I don't know what happened subsequent.
I was there and took the pictures because I couldn't believe it was one of ours.
Yeah. I mean, they're missing floorboards.
It's, yes, they do beat them up.
Yeah.
Is 10 years the average lifespan for the Highway Department vehicles based on your experience?
They have detailed schedules for replacing them. They know, you know, and they try to use as much as they can. It's dependent upon, I mean, they're rough. These trucks have rough usages, you know.
Sure.
And they patch them and they fix them as well as they can. I think they do a very effective job at it, but...
And as a philosophy, just because we reach the life expectancy doesn't mean that we trade the vehicle in or replace the piece of equipment. We examine it, make sure, just like we all do at home. If we can get another year out of the car, we're going to get another year out of the car.
Well, that's what we did on the fire engines.
Yeah? And so we talked about the, the only thing we have not talked about is the replacement for a wheel loader. That is a, they found a great deal on it, and this is a real workhorse. They use this in all sorts of, you know, the loading salt and...
Is that the front-end loader?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I know they had a placeholder for it in previous years that was considerably in excess of this. So they seem to have gotten a good deal on it. So that's $116,500. So the total Public Works Highway that we're recommending is $466,800. Public Works Landfill, the, and typically, they will accept in years where there really are no fund, capital funds available, replace one closed top, one trailer. And they have a placeholder for tires and undercarriage repair for $25,000. That's moved up a bit in recent years because of the costs. And Randy indicated that the costs of the trailers are going up because they're trying to buy aluminum trailers because they're more efficient. They can carry a larger load and they're lighter.
Right. And the tires are going up because they're made of petroleum.
Yeah. So we're recommending $85,000 for the Public Works Landfill. And the next department is the Sewers Department. Now, as you recall, this is funded by user fees. The first item is $84,000 to repair two pump stations, Bayberry and Walton Cove. And so in each of them are, you know, they're, apparently Randy is trying to go through and repair and enhance the, on a preventative basis, the, these various pumping stations. And where possible, put in and install a common pump so that when the, when the, when the station breaks down, they don't have to go and have a special pump. They can just snap in a new pump. And that's, that doesn't happen overnight. He's trying to introduce some efficiency and economy. And then they're requesting a replacement of a GMC 250 truck with plow for $30,500. That's net of trade. And then there are, there's $50,000 for service replacement. And as you know, it's replacement of the sewer link, sewer lines on roads where there's construction because of the motorium on digging into streets after, after the roads are repaired and replaced. So total for Sewer Department is $164,500. The Library. We're recommending computers. That this is the normal replacement of 20 percent of $20,000. This next project, we've seen on Capitol, they've been dealing with issues with the lobby, the lobby floors for years. And they've been trying to figure out a cost-efficient way of doing it. And because it bubbles, and the bubbles get bigger in the summer and they have to put carpets down. And it's a, it's a safety issue. And they finally found the cause of it, and they found a lower, lower price alternative to what they had planned. They were originally thinking, and they had originally proposed two phases. Replace the lobby first in 2015 and in the cafe floor in 2016. Now, that would have cost, that would have cost $158,000 if they did it. And that was, and the tile was very expensive. So what they found is that they've, they found a solution of a rubber tile that's more suitable for the application. And the all-in cost is $94,000 because it's been an item on here for so long. And it is, it is a potential safety issue. We're recommending the $94,000.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the floor. I was in there one morning and a woman slipped and fell on the top floor, broke her shoulder. I'm just wondering what this replacement flooring, is it designed to be, you know, less slippery than?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, you can't be perfectly slip-proof.
Understand, but...
But it's, it's got a texture to it. Because they're very acutely aware of that potential, the slip and fall because of the bumps in the existing tile. We're also recommending exterior repainting, reglazing. Apparently, they haven't had any significant capital expenditure spent on the exterior of the building since 2001. So this is a, this is a make-do to prevent further damage for $20,000. And I know that the trustees are looking at long-term plan to renovate the library. But this is, this can't wait. So we're recommending the $20,000. And finally, we're recommending $9,000 for a new public address system. Apparently, in the library right now, there is no way to warn everybody of an incident, an emergency. And this is a way to do it.
How's the roof?
Look out.
It's coming up, it's coming up in 2016.
Is it going to make it?
Yeah.
Somehow Dennis has a way of making things last. I don't know how he does.
Very thorough.
Bazooka?
You know, and that, and he really is amazing because he's made the boilers last.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. That has, we've been talking about those.
For years.
I'm not sure if he talked to you about it during your session about the roof. But one of the things we're working on, and I know Betty's been working on it with him with assets in our asset management program, is the idea of whether or not we should replace the roof at the same time as replacing the cooling units, the HVAC units on the roof. The HVAC units have a couple more years of life in them than the roof does. However, the biggest problem with the HVAC units is the connection to the roof. So, do we want to take them off, replace the roof, and put the old ones back on, and a couple of years later, go in and take them off? And so, he's trying to marry those two time periods together, see if we can get some better synergies.
I think they also have to wait and take a look at the redesign of the library, which is a ways out. But that should be looked at, too, in terms, as a facilities management issue.
So, the library, we're recommending $143,000. The recreation department, the, and then, as you know, these are funded by user rates and charges. We're recommending fitness equipment for $25,000, field rehabilitation for $10,000, open recreation equipment replacement for $15,000, and building rehab for $15,000. The total we're recommending for the rec department is $65,000.
Which building?
The, the building where they're located.
Present?
Presently.
This one here?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And South Shore Country Club, again, this is funded by the revenues from the South Shore Country Club. We're recommending five mowers that are replacements, and these will be, these would be financed. And, and then $100,000 for golf course and facility improvements. I mean, they've got a list of, you know, they typically will do something every year.
With respect to the mowers, the reason they're being financed through a borrowing is because, if you recall in the past, we've used leases, since they finance their equipment over two to five years. And leases work great for it, except we can no longer get leases for these dollars in any rates that are less than seven to nine percent. And we can borrow at .25%, .3% and just pay a principal payment for a couple of years to effectuate the same result at a much lower cost.
So, the $100,000...
The $100,000 is their general improvements, we would not borrow that. This is what they'll be using as a cash flow to fix bunkers, or a variety, and...
They've got an ongoing program.
No, I know, they've been doing that for years, and...
And then, if they don't have the money, they don't do the work on this piece.
That's the golf course and the building?
The whole facility.
Correct.
They pay for it.
Correct.
The bowling alley, the pool, the whole nine yards.
And so, the total that we've recommended for the South Shore Country Club is $291,417. Now, the next is the school department. And let me, there are no requests for the, for the middle school. Foster Elementary School, we're recommending $10,000 for playground repairs and drainage. There are apparently some, there is some equipment over there that's missing pieces, and they need to add one more piece, so the kids are not tempted to jump from one part to the remaining part with no bridge. So, I think they've made a compelling argument for that. So, we're recommending $10,000, and that's the total for Foster. Plymouth River School, we're recommending ceilings and recessed lights in the office. Again, a lot of these items have been on the Capitol plans for a while, and it makes sense to, to make these enhancements. There are no requests for East Elementary School. South School, I mean, South School, I'm dating myself, but I remember when it was new, when my kids were there, so I can't imagine that we're doing Capitol items for it. But we're recommending replacing the carpet in the library in room 120 for $13,100, and a new kitchen floor for $12,000. And the South School totals are $25,100. High School, we're recommending replacing carpet in the auditorium for $10,000, and Sander refinished the auditorium stage floor for $8,000. Efficient lighting projects, $39,000. This is a continuation of the same amount from the previous year.
Are they working with the Energy Action Committee on this?
I can't, I don't know, and I would assume that they've had some conversations with them.
Okay, because I know Otto Harling has been very active talking to the schools, and this just looks like one of his projects.
They've had, I think, discussion in my time here, on a number of occasions on this. There was a plan, I think an assessment, had refreshed my memory, by the municipal light plant, they came in to take a look and work with the Energy Action Committee.
And they did this building, town, and the library.
Right.
Main focus.
There was...
And the result of that is some of the switches that you can see where, actually, in the office back here, as you walk in the rooms, the lights turn off and on automatically. There was about six months to educate people to stop turning the lights off on and on, and now that we've gotten through that period, the lights are actually setting off accordingly.
Yeah, and one and two years ago, there were items in the Capitol plan to fund the, the efficient lighting projects.
Just to give credit where credit is due, the light plant helped us with the initial funding.
Yes.
For most of those projects.
And the last item that we're recommending is resurfacing the kitchen floor for $19,000. The high school totals are therefore $76,000 that we're recommending. And now, the school system-wide, the first item on here is the gatehouse renovation. This, the gatehouse renovation has been on, on the radar for the last five or six years, and, and having toward it, we're, we've gotten to the point where we understand that it does need some work, and we're recommending $40,000.
Is that the small building between the driveways?
Yes.
Going in?
Yep.
What is that used for?
It's for the dispatch area, for the, for the bus drivers.
And the bus drivers.
The old credit union?
Yes, that's, that's the building.
Oh, okay, not the little gatehouse?
No.
Actual, okay.
I think when we say gatehouse, we refer to that section of buildings.
Okay.
We're not talking about the little century gatehouse that's, you know, four by four.
Okay.
And we're also recommending $12,000. That would be a lot of money for that.
Well, also, I was thinking, are you going to see 20 bus drivers in the gatehouse?
It's a little crowded in there.
It's like college, right? How many people can you fit in a Volkswagen?
Jimmy Fallon joke last night.
The, we're also recommending roof leak remediation for Building 12. As you all know, the traces are in there, and I know that there are some plans for Building 12 and 179. If, however, it doesn't immediately impact them, they have to do something about, about the leaks in the roof. So, we're recommending the $12,000. And the assumption is that if there is some, there are some funds available, and it can be, you know, implemented, and the remodeling can be implemented quickly, that wouldn't be used, but my sense is that it's probably going to be used. They have to do something. And the third item is the, replace the school transportation van for $30,000. And again, having seen some of the, having seen some of the equipments driving around in the school department, they get their, they get the use out of those. And there's a, there's a new item here, and you're probably familiar with it from, and I know you talked to the school department on the operating side, but, but you're familiar with this, this, what they call the park program? And it's, it's partnership for, for assessment of readiness for college and carriers. I guess it's a new initiative testing for college admissions. And Massachusetts is one of, is one of 24 states in the test. Now, the implementation is in the spring of 2016, so they have to get ready for it now. So, you know, it, so, there are, there are requirements for simultaneous online testing of, you know, 50% of the kids in a class, so they need to have enough equipment staged so that they can do this testing. As a result, you know, during 2015, the school department will, will provide additional computers for each elementary school totaling $35,000. This is basically a cart with computers on it, that they can roll into various. And this will suffice in the first year. You'll see in out years, there's an additional $50,000, and that will be for some additional expenditures for the other schools in subsequent years. But apparently, this is in flux. I mean, it's, you know, the requirements for the, for IT is fine for in areas where we have good infrastructure, but out in western Massachusetts, or some states with schools in, in remote areas, it's very difficult to, to be able to pull this off. So, this, this program apparently is in flux, but the school has to plan for implementation of it.
If it doesn't follow through, are the computers that we do purchase still...
Yes.
...able to be used for other functions?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And then, there's, speaking of technology enhancements, this is the second, and you're starting to see that the school, the schools are starting to implement a, what they call a one-on-one program, where students have access, each student has access to a computer. Now, this doesn't mean that everybody carries one around, but they have access to it. You can do it a number of ways. And again, they're, they're, they're going through, you know, they're, they're going through the process of deciding, you know, what they need, and the impact in 2015 is relatively small at $29,000. And then, this is basically two computer carts, each with 26 iPads each for the, for the high school. And then, as the program gets rolled out, you'll see it ramps up. And if you look in, in fiscal year 2016, they're forecasting $193,000. Again, they're in the early stages of conceptualizing, conceptualizing how they are going to be doing that, and we'll be hearing more about that.
Okay, so the plan is to give access for every student to have access to a computer?
Correct.
Okay, that's good, we're catching up to Norwell.
Yeah.
Well, they have, I have to compliment the school on a really well-thought-out technology plan for the entire school system.
Yeah.
As I said, I have grandchildren in Norwell schools, and they have this already, so it's good that we're doing this.
What level do they start giving the kids the computers?
Well, they're starting to, they're starting to ramp it up in the middle school. They've got the technology budget for the middle school. They're doing that. They're not at the point where they're handing the computers out to, to students right now. They're, they're planning to do it on a staged, on a staged effort. I mean, you can imagine how expensive it would be to give every, every kid a computer, and they're deciding whether they want to buy them, they want to lease them, how, exactly how they're going to approach it.
Plus, you've got the whole spectrum of teacher capability with all the new technology, too, so they've got to make sure the teachers, teachers know as much as the kids do.
Yeah.
You can't get there unless you take the first step.
Yeah, and they've got, they do have a plan, but, you know, they've made it clear that they really, they're, they're still in the early stages of really deciding how best to do this.
Does, does the $30,000 this year commit the town to the $400,000, $425,000 over the next two years?
Not necessarily. I, I mean, I, I mean, there, there are specific pieces of equipment that they've identified, and they certainly could be used. And I think they're still, as I said, thinking about how best to implement this. So, so getting back to 2015, again, they're, along the theme of school technology, they've, we're recommending $170,000. This is the normal replacement of their computer equipment, and they, they have lists and, and that they provide substantiating this number, and, and this number drifts up slightly each year, but it's been pretty consistent. Instructional equipment, there's $28,125 for that, that's all sorts of notebooks, it's weight boards, it's easels, things like that, specific pieces of equipment to do it. And then, unfortunately, they've, they're, they have a placeholder of $25,000 for the assorted roof leak in, in their various buildings. So, and that's been consistent, they do use it during the year.
Are there any buildings that are more problematic than others?
I think they mentioned, I think they mentioned that, I mean, the, the old middle school, they just had an, an issue there with leakage, but...
And that's, that's what triggered the middle, the middle school. And it's, this was an issue that they, I'm glad to see that, as you look out, that's, they've got money for this going forward in subsequent years, that's good, good plan.
Yeah. And also, they've got copiers, and they'll, they've got 31 copiers, and depending upon, they'll either buy them if they're low volume, and then they can use them, or they'll lease the, the high-volume copiers. So, they've got, you know, they've got a replacement plan for the, for the copiers. That's, in case I didn't say, it's $25,000. The funds for a new wheelchair van, $47,000, we're recommending that. And then, maintenance equipment, interior, exterior, $31,000.
Right, is the wheelchair van a new additional one to the ones they have? Or is this like a replacement for a van? This is new?
Replacement.
Oh, replacement, okay.
And the, and then, maintenance equipment, exterior and interior, $31,475. These are floor sanders, carpet covers, things like that. And then, they've, they've implemented an area carpet replacement plan for $11,200. These are the, the large carpets that, that you put out there to cover up the floors. The kids will, they explained that some of the, the kids are in, in meeting rooms, they're, they're sitting on these carpets, and they're trying to establish a replacement plan on an orderly basis each year. And then, there is an item in here for fire alarm monitoring changes. Now that the fire department is no longer going to be managing the fire alarms, the schools are going to be spending about $5,000 per building to install equipment that will interface between the existing equipment and the commercial alarm companies. And they're estimating $5,000 per school.
So, the, the fire alarm would go to a third party?
And then, the last item for the schools is maintenance vehicle, a replacement of that for $35, $38,000. The total, system-wide totals is $572,574. Total school that we're recommending is $698,674. And as I said at the beginning of the presentation, the total Capitol projects are $4,7,839. Additional questions?
I'll ask, any, any other questions for anybody?
Good job. I'm so happy to see the gatehouse renovations. Seriously, they've been there since 2002.
I know.
So, thank you for doing that, it really needs something, and the people that drive the buses do need to stay warm or cool, regardless, depending on the season. I think this is very good. I'll have other questions, but this is, this is really good. Guys done good.
Paul? I'm new to this, so my question may seem a little naive, but you meet with all the appropriate department heads to make these determinations, do you go out there and eyeball the stuff?
Oh, yeah.
We do, we do. I mean, I think that, you know, the, some of the members have been around long enough that we've, we've gone out to multiple, you know, facilities. And the school department has periodic tours of their facilities. The fire department, two years ago, when they were really wrestling with whether to, with the renovations and what they needed to do with the stations, gave us the tour of, of the buildings. And, and the other departments, for example, the DPW, when, when they bring in... And the other departments, for example, the DPW, when they bring in, when they want to replace a piece of equipment, they bring in the pictures of it, too, so.
And you cannot well-dress.
Can I ask a question with respect to things like the bulletproof vests or the defibrillators? Are those traded in? Is any of this stuff traded, or is it just totally bereft of any value?
I guess, you know, from my perspective, effectively, it's, there may be for, you know, I mean, when you think about it, defibrillators, you may be able to fix, you know, fix them and sell them somewhere, but I don't know who'd buy them. But bulletproof vests, there is a shelf life to them, apparently, as well.
Right. We try to trade in anything we can? Okay.
The secret weapon is Lieutenant Nokitis, who, God love him, I don't know how he does it, but he can trade in some of our beat up, banged up, you would turn it to a junkyard, and yet he still gets money for them. He is, he's really good.
Are there any questions from the audience? Any questions from the audience? Okay. Ray, thank you. This was very thorough and detailed.
Thanks, committee.
We'll let you know when we schedule the vote.
Great. Let's do that. It would be very interesting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Took a little longer than we thought, but it's a more detailed explanation. We want to get into the warrant article, starting with Article T, which is dealing with unclaimed checks and the treasurer.
The treasurer's here.
Gene, nice to have you back. Thank you to the committee again. So, Gene, any comments you'd like to make, maybe tell the public what this is all about? That would be helpful.
This article, basically, do they see what we're doing, or should I read the, do I need to read the article?
Give a quick recap.
Do a little recap? Okay. This is an article that we've submitted to ask the voters at town meeting to accept Chapter 200A, 9A of the Mass General Laws. This is a, it's a general administration article, kind of a housekeeping thing. And this law sets out, it provides for the disposition of abandoned funds, so that we can go through a process where we return them to the town's general fund if they go for an extended period of time without being cashed. So this is, this is a section of the Mass General Law that sets out the procedures that a municipal treasurer must follow before reclaiming uncashed check money and returning it to the town. So this particular law has been in existence for a while. There are two ways you can handle abandoned funds and unclaimed checks. And in the olden days, the money used to be turned over to the Commonwealth, and they would go through the process and keep the funds themselves. And a number of years ago, this Chapter 200A, 9A was established, and treasurers were allowed to use an alternative procedure. And we've been using that procedure for many years. With the Municipal Relief Act of 2010, the legislature amended this 200A, Section 9, and in order to expedite the process and, you know, tweak the legislation a little bit supposedly to make it a little easier for us, less cumbersome. And they also added the requirement that where treasurers could follow this general law before and proceed along the process without town meeting approval, they did make it a local option bylaw. So I need to come to you and to town meeting to ask the voters to approve the legislation. So that's the background of it. This is an article that has to do with the process for dealing with uncashed checks. Acceptance of the statute would expedite the procedure that's currently available to treasurers for disposition of uncashed checks that are held in their custody, and also to simplify the process for moving the related encumbered funds back to the general treasury. Once they are returned to the general treasury, then they can be re-appropriated for other expenditures in the town. The current law requires municipal treasurers to wait three years before an uncashed check may be deemed abandoned, and then the reclaiming process starts after that and can take another year and a half. So you're looking at three, four, you know, up to five years before the money's returned to the town. Adoption of this legislation will allow treasurers to deem a check abandoned after one year, as long as we print on the face of each check that we issue, the statement, you know, void if not cashed within one year from date of issue. So basically, we can expedite it, we can move it up from three years to one year, without jeopardizing the ownership of the funds themselves to the person. Because even though we can deem it void after one year, we can take it off the bank balance, we can, we then move those funds into a liability account where the treasurer is still obligated to go through the reclaiming process, but we've picked up a year and a half to two years in the process before we can return these to the fund. So that's the gist of it.
Was it a treasurer's universally request to get this?
Yes, it was. It was part of the Treasurer's Association to move it forward, and we were hoping to achieve some other efficiencies with it, like maybe eliminate some of the newspaper postings and make them a little simpler. We did, for example, on checks under $100, we can advertise on the town's website, and if we don't hear from that, we can move them quicker. Over $100, we still have to do a second posting in a newspaper. So they did make it a little less cumbersome and a little quicker to go through the process.
Good. Okay. Irma?
How much do we have out there right now, and what's the range of how long?
We have, well, if we're, say we're on the three-year plan right now, which basically is kind of moot when they did this amendment, but we're still using that plan. We have about 139 checks right now that are over the three years. I think it's, are they over, or over one year old? I went with the one year. And they total about $31,000. We don't have a terrible liability with this, so it has not been high priority, but it is something that is a good control measure also for the town. To void these checks after one year also means that after we go through the reclaiming process and someone does claim the funds, instead of us just rewriting another check down in the treasurer's office, we put that new check through the warrant process, where it then gets approved by the town accountant and also signed off on the warrant by the selectmen. So there's an audit control aspect to it that's appealing as well.
This is great. Thank you for finding this.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. I think this is fairly straightforward. Excuse me, Irma, would you be so kind as to vote?
Article T, I'd make a recommendation, I make a motion to recommend that the town accept Chapter 200A, Section 9A of the Massachusetts General Laws, which provides for the disposition of abandoned funds back into the town's general fund, upon the required notice to the person entitled to said funds and upon expiration of the deadline for claiming said funds, all in accordance with the statutory procedures contained in Section 9A of Chapter 200A of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. The next two articles we're going to discuss have to do with procedures at town meeting and electronic voting. And I see our, I think you're officially the Assistant Town Moderator, are you?
I'm here tonight, Mr. Chairman, as the chair of the Hingham Electronic Voting Study Committee.
So your other role. Okay, well, come on up, or bring up whomever you'd like.
If a gentleman would join me.
Andy and company, if you'd be so kind, introduce yourself to the folks.
Thank you. I'm Andy McElany, and this is Eric Haskell and Charlie Clapp. We are members of the Hingham Electronic Voting Study Committee, established at last year's town meeting and appointed by the moderator. There were four other members who could not be with us tonight. You will recall that the Government Study Committee looked into the issue of electronic voting at town meetings and was highly enthusiastic, as I understand were the selectmen and the advisory committee, because of the advantages of privacy, accuracy, and efficiency. Arguably, there are some disadvantages that we could talk about, but we were established, this committee was established, and charged with looking into the feasibility and cost of electronic voting and making a recommendation to town meeting. Now, we have looked into many aspects of voting electronically. It's an interesting phenomenon. We obviously have confirmed the advantages that have been stated previously by the Government Study Committee. We have heard people speak of a disadvantage in the sense that the town meeting is the legislative body, and normally legislators are expected to be accountable for their votes. Another disadvantage is that without public counted votes, one loses the modeling effect of other voters. So if I'm not prepared on a particular article, but I see someone standing who I know is conscientious and reflects my views, that may help me decide how to vote. Some people think those are significant, others perhaps not. The real driver, of course, behind electronic voting is the cost. And the interesting phenomenon is that of the 16 towns, of which we're aware, that have either adopted, rejected, or are still investigating electronic voting, only one town that has adopted it has an open town meeting. Seven towns have adopted electronic voting. The one with the open town meeting is Wayland. And Wayland has a population of about 13,000 people. From what we understand, its meetings were long and somewhat rancorous, and electronic voting has helped the decorum and efficiency of their meetings significantly. So they're very enthusiastic about it. The town, our town moderator has been out to see Wayland. Last year, a company called Option Technologies, Inc., demonstrated to the selectmen and others their technology. They demonstrated it to us this year. Members of our committee went down to Duxbury and saw a demonstration there. And Duxbury is the next of the towns with open town meetings to look seriously at this proposal. It will have a pilot program at this spring's meeting, the end of this month, the end of next month, and in the fall. The vendor is Optin-Option Technologies, Inc., again. Let me say, add parenthetically that there may be 10 or 12 or more providers of this equipment. Generically, we're talking about an audience response system. So it's what we're, the equipment we're talking to is about a fairly basic technology, a handheld device, for our purposes, sends a yes signal or a no signal or an abstention signal to a receiver/tabulator that instantaneously counts the votes, and the moderator can read the votes. The, of the, all the towns that have adopted, all of them, all seven, who have adopted electronic voting, all have used Option Technologies, with the exception of one town, I think it's Bill Recker, that has one other provider. Several towns have sent out requests for proposals and have received several responses. So there are other vendors who've responded, but our investigation reveals that Option Technologies is clearly the leader when it comes to electronic voting at town meetings. And it appears, from what they have told us, that they have adopted this as a bit of a niche market that they are very interested in pursuing. The interesting aspect of representative town meeting versus open town meeting is that the reason primarily that representative town meetings like electronic voting is that it tells you what each member of the town meeting, how each member of the town meeting has voted on each article, precisely the opposite of why we would have it. It's an accountability factor. Ironically, it is a cheaper service for representative town meetings because they have a smaller number of voters, typically someplace between 200 and 300. So they have a small number of voters, a fixed number of voters, and so they know how many handheld devices they need. We were told that there are really three factors that drive the cost. One is the number of handheld devices. The second is the number of what they call welcoming stations. And it's, that's simply the place at the entrance to the town meeting where the voters register and are simultaneously given a handheld device that has a number code, and the name of the voter and the code are scanned into the machine, only for checkout purposes. So when the voter hands in the device at the end of the meeting, his or her name and numbers erased. But if there's one device missing, one knows who didn't turn it in. And the third factor is actually the number of nights involved, because most typically, the systems are leased, and in addition to the equipment, the company provides the technicians to assist in the process. So the number of people that are needed and the number of nights for which they are needed, of course, is another driver of the costs. The cost figures are, at this stage, in our investigation, preliminary. We have not sent out a request for proposals. We think that is somewhat premature. What we recommend is sort of a three-step process. The first is Article FF, I think it might be, or at least that might be what the advisory committee refers to.
EE.
Well, I think this, we have two. I think the second one is FF.
That's right.
Yes.
And the second one, FF, would amend the bylaws of the town to permit electronic voting. As the bylaw currently stands, every article must, in the first instance, be voted by voice vote, and then there are provisions for a count vote or a ballot vote. And without amending that bylaw, we can do nothing, of course, about electronic voting. So that's step one. So even if we want to do it on a trial basis, we have to first amend the bylaw. Of course, the bylaw amendment does not go into effect immediately, so one could not amend the bylaw and do electronic voting at the same meeting. So our first step is to propose that the 2014 annual town meeting amend the bylaw, which would thereafter permit us to do a pilot program, and we would recommend doing such a pilot program at the 2015 annual town meeting. And then, frankly, having a warrant article for the 2015 town meeting that would ask voters to decide whether they wish to adopt electronic voting as a permanent measure. The factors that we consider to be the advantages or the disadvantages are soft or subjective matters. Privacy may not be a huge issue to me, but it may be a huge issue to someone else. Some people with loud voices may think that, you know, that voice votes are wonderful. So these are, as we say, subjective considerations that are very hard to balance against hard costs. So we don't think, frankly, that any individual or any committee can make the judgment once for all people, you know, what is the dollar value of this? And that's why we recommend that the town meeting have an opportunity to experience electronic voting and then decide whether they think it's worthwhile. By the 2015 town meeting, we will have very hard costs. We will have sent out a request for proposals and have some better numbers. The number, we can give you numbers tonight as to what other towns have paid or expect to pay. We have a ballpark figure from this Option Technologies that is the primary provider. The, it's an interesting field. The towns that have adopted... The towns that have adopted this typically, with the exception of Brookline, which has purchased the equipment for about $20,000 and has, has their own people and put it in place and run it each year, most towns lease it for $8,000, $10,000, or $12,000 a year. And some towns, I think, I think Wayland is expecting to pay $60,000 a year for its system. But Wayland had a free pilot program provided to it. It also is, I believe, going to enter into a three or more year lease as a way of bringing its cost down. The, the vendor installs its own network in the building where the electronic voting is going to be used. Our gymnasium, we're told, doesn't really have the capacity to support the kind of Wi-Fi needs of this system, but it doesn't matter because the vendor says, for security and reliability purposes, we want to put our own system in anyway. So they put the system in, takes a little over day, I guess, and then they, they take it out again. If they have, in a town like Wayland with a long-term commitment, they would leave it in place for, for a few years. So one factor driving costs down is the potential for a long-term commitment. Another possibility is that two or more towns would enter into some kind of cooperative purchasing arrangement. Duxbury unfortunately has their meeting a month ahead of ours, so it, the timing is too, isn't good enough. I mean, they're too far apart. If, if they were on successive Mondays, perhaps, you know, you could keep the vendors in, in place. The other factor driving the cost is the, the historic observation that for each of the past 14 years, prices have gone down, and that trend is expected to continue. As we said, this is not terribly sophisticated technology, but the software involved, I suppose, would change periodically, so you have to stay on top of the equipment. But the handheld device, I, the government study committee analogized it to a cellphone, which I think probably overstates frankly the capacity. It's closer to a keypad on the, the most basic calculator imaginable. And I, and I don't say that in any mocking manner, I just, you know, lest anybody be intimidated by use of the word "technology," this is pretty, pretty easy stuff, so even the older of us can manage it. An interesting sidelight is, we asked the vendor, what, what about people with disabilities or who are serious technophobes? And they said what they typically do is, is set these folks in a particular area of the hall for the town meeting and then bring in some volunteer high school students in the wall about electronics.
Tell them how to vote.
To, to assist them.
It'll be override.
Yeah. The, so what we have put in, in the, the other article is a request for an additional $25,000, if you will. Last year, when we were established, the town appropriated $5,000 for the committee. And unless Mr. Clapp insists on a big blowout party, we don't think we're going to use any of that. We'll carry, we'll carry it over to, to next year. Now, I recognize $30,000 is not an insignificant sum of money, but I also would note that the government study committee returned, the $5,000 that came to us came from the government study committee excess, and they also turned back to the town $10,000. In terms of metrics, if you look at that number spread over the number of registered voters in the town, it's less than $1.50, I think, per voter. If you look at it per resident, of course, it's even lower than that. As, as a percentage of the overall budget, of course, it is something in the order of 3/100 of 1% or something. So it's, it's not an insignificant number, but how does one put a cost on these values? So we would ask for a total of 30,000, the five we didn't not spend, and an additional $25,000, and then entrust that to Mr. Clapp to negotiate the best deal he can. We would ask for a sum up to 30,000, and we don't know exactly what we would have to pay. We would, ideally, we'd pay nothing. We would get our own free pilot program. I, I wouldn't guarantee that because we're a lot larger than Wayland and Duxbury, and we also are not the first car on the train, so the loss leaders have already been put in place. So I expect that, that we will have to pay something, but we think Hingham is a sufficiently attractive customer that we'll be able to negotiate a reasonable deal. So that will let us do a pilot program by having the 2015 town meeting use electronic voting. Each vote, by the way, we, we would suggest be at the discretion of the moderator as to whether it'd be electronic vote or not. Many of our votes, of course, are, are very quick unanimous votes, and no purpose would be served by electronic voting there. But in those instances, when count votes are called for, well, the past several years, it seems to us they have been more, they've been more common, and they are very time-consuming, as you know. So we would like to try it, have the town experience it, see what they think of it, tell them at that point, as by 2015 town meeting, we'll have a very good handle on what we, what the cost would be on a going-forward basis, and then let the town decide at that point whether they think it's worth the cost. Gentlemen?
I think, to reiterate, the trick here is you're fundamentally balancing soft advantages against a hard cost. And we've done our best as a committee to try to define some of those, vet those out, but ultimately, we would defer to a town meeting to say, is this worth it? Are there people walking into that room that would not otherwise walk into that room because they're intimidated about a certain issue? Are there people more comfortable voting privately that they, rather than having to raise their hand or shout out or stand up next to a neighbor or otherwise? So those are, that's the, that's the tricky part to it. I'm going to defer to Eric here for a moment because he did some very, very good work relative to past town meetings, the trend that we're seeing there, and looking back over his shoulder where electronic voting may have influenced either voters and/or an outcome from that.
Right. So among the materials that we distributed for this meeting is a, a chart that we put together, an Excel spreadsheet. And what it does is, is give some details on each of the standing and ballot votes that have taken place at town meetings, annual and special, going back to 2001. And when we, as a committee, analyzed this data, we, we pulled a couple of conclusions out of it. One, like, like Mr. McElhenney mentioned a moment ago, while standing and ballot votes are only a small fraction of the total number of votes taken on, on warrant articles, they seem to be increasing in frequency. We've seen more and more of them over the past four or five years. And candidly, the way the, the bylaw that governs voting at town meeting is set up, that's not surprising. It's, it's not, it's not difficult to compel a standing or ballot vote if a small number of voters at the town meeting wants to do that. We, we've noticed a trend to see more and more of that recently. We also noticed when looking at the vote totals, that we've had some extremely close votes, standing and ballot votes, at town meetings over the past several years, including one. If you have the chart in front of you, the second column from the right shows the number of votes that would have needed to switch from aye to nay or from nay to aye to change the outcome of that vote. You'll notice that many of those are very small numbers. A lot of votes would have changed with a swing of, you know, dozen, two dozen, three dozen votes. There was even one at, at the annual town meeting in 2012 that was razor-thin and depended on one vote. And as we, as a committee, analyzed this data, we saw these as the kind of situations where having an impeccably accurate, automatically tallied electronic vote could add a lot of value to, to the decisions the town meeting's making.
Okay. Is that, okay. Couple of administrative items. If it takes time to set this up, one of the problems we, not a problem, but a management issue for Dot Gallo is, you know, if they need a day to set up for a town meeting, have you had conversations with Dot as to procedurally, can she work with this?
We have not. We have not spoken with the school committee. The vendor says they're trying to get it down to one day setup.
No, I understand, but yet, it's the issue of, we take over their world for the period of town meeting. So, I mean, that's, I think, an issue.
Fair enough.
Have we had any conversation with our IT folks on this?
I know that Steve Becker went to your meeting the other night and expressed some of the concerns that he has, and was there as a resource.
Yeah, Steve was there, very helpful. You know, recognizes that currently we don't have the capability to do this ourselves. If we were to purchase the equipment, he could, he could, with some assistance, certainly do it. It would, it would take some effort beyond his regular duties now, but he, you know, he, he recognizes the, the issues that would, we would be faced with, and, you know, we haven't, we haven't gotten down to the cost with him, purchase versus leasing, yet.
Okay. So just for the my benefit and the benefit, I had a discussion with a couple of people today on this subject, knowing it was coming, and just want to articulate, I think you've said it better than I will, but the, the problem we're trying to solve is the soft vote issue. And I think, Eric, your analysis says that there are a number of votes that in recent years are close, and some people may have felt that if we didn't count properly, and it's a manual count process, that perhaps their vote wasn't represented correctly. And I think that's the management problem we're trying to solve with this. The moderator would make the call similar to what he does today. Would, and if I read the article right, you'd still have the same seven voters could stand up, I would assume, to ask for an electronic vote, and it would just replace the, the standing and ballot votes. Is that the?
That's, that's our kind of, under the, the bylaw is, as amended by our proposal, the same process would occur. And when seven voters stood and requested a standing vote, the moderator would decide whether it'd be standing or electronic. Likewise, if 50 or the advisory committee stood and requested a ballot vote, the moderator would decide whether it'd be ballot or electronic. I, I think it's pretty, pretty clear that in the case of any counted vote, the moderator would look to the electronic voting.
I think there's some flexibility there, too, where the moderator could front-run, where he would see an issue, see a vote, see something that was potentially divisive or some of the privacy issues maybe nascent, and just call for an electronic vote at the outset. That would be, try to do it in a way that built in that flexibility and play it out. So the lights go out, the electricity is gone, you can go right back to your old town meeting. If you needed to just go back to the way you always did things, you can always do that way.
Okay.
The other thing, the advisory committee normally has a pretty good handle on what is going to be a contentious vote, depending on how their hearings go. And they usually will tell the moderator that we expect a standing ballot or a, a standing vote or a ballot vote, and this would be very helpful there.
I mean, I think this, I'll say it, the intimidation factor that I know is potentially in, in the room, this is trying to deal with that, what, that's, that's the issue. I think that is the issue. And I, and I've been the recipient of people who've felt that, gee, I didn't get a fair, a fair shake. I'm sorry, Paul, do you have any, any comments?
Didn't the Supreme Court of the United States decide by a 5/4 vote that the voting in Florida for George Bush should stand and therefore he should be the president over Al Gore?
Well, the interesting, the interesting phenomenon that the council is, plays in, I'm glad you asked, sorry, it plays into the, because every time there was a recount, the count was different. Every single time, the count was different. And of course, that's, that's a problem with manual counting. You know, the electronics down there didn't work. So that's why you had to fall back on the recounts, but.
Well, let me ask you this, Andrew, because I think to sign on to electronic voting, you have to kind of buy into this whole thing. And I'm looking at just your memo, which is very detailed, my compliments, gentlemen. You've got 659 articles that were voted on from 2001 to the present at the town meeting. And 23 of them were standing votes?
Standing.
So it's less than 1% we're talking about here?
Three, what is it, 3%, I think, maybe? It's a small.
1% would be six.
Small, small number. We absolutely.
I'm, I'm looking at the costs, which frankly, there's a pretty good swing to it, but let's take worst-case scenario, $75,000, and just multiply that by 16, and I'm lousy in math, that's why I have Ted Air and Irma, but that comes to 1.2 million, which is the cost of the fire engines we just voted on? For what, a very small percentage of votes? And then I look at the votes, and then I say, all right, most of them, most of these years that you've reeled off, there's like two or three standing votes, with the exception of 2005, which was an interesting year because there were six in that year. And then I look and I say, well, wait a minute. Some of these are zoning changes, and they require 2/3's vote? And with all due respect, I'm sure you wouldn't disagree, I thought Tom O'Donnell did one heck of a job, you know, saying, "The ayes have it, the nays have it, the chairs in doubt." He was pretty good at that.
I, I don't know of any instance where the moderator's call has been wrong. Every time there's been a call, subsequent counted vote, it has confirmed the moderator's call.
Yeah. And I'm sure Mike Puzo's going to carry that legacy on in fine fashion. So I'm really wondering, you know, do we really need this?
The way it was raised, is this the solution looking for a problem?
I mean, I, I'd rather spend it on fire engines, that's all.
Were you listening to my phone call today? Because that's exactly the question I had with a person I won't name, but.
If you want to charge this committee for determining the answer to that, you can go do that, but that was not what we were charged with. We were charged with giving you some information, putting it in front of the town to let them decide these very, very valid issues. I'm not going to, I don't think any of us would refuse. You could have joined any one of our conversations and we'd all said the exact same thing. So there's, there's nothing you're saying that is new. Right down to the Supreme Court, the high court, we had that conversation, too. We have.
I didn't see that in the memo, Charlie. Come on.
So, I think that's, that's a little step there in life, but it's, I think from, from my personal perspective and from the committee's perspective, do we want to lay the groundwork for the town in such a manner that maybe it's next year, maybe there's a sense of it, but it has the possibility there at some point in the future? There are certainly towns in the Commonwealth that have had experience with this, people that depend on it, that have no town vote.
I, I don't think that the votes, with perhaps the limited exception of a couple, would be considered rancorous. Spirited is more the term I like to think of.
Well, no, rancorous we use in, in reference to Wayland, not, not here. I agree 100% with that.
I mean, we don't really have that.
I don't want to create a liability case here, so could we change?
Okay, well, we're distinguishable from a town that's, that's adopted it. Can we say that?
There was a different value proposition.
Charlie, that's so well said.
Well, Charlie's absolutely right when he speaks in terms of value propositions, because going back to what, what Andy said earlier about, about the soft benefits of a technology, of a program like this, it really comes down to a value judgment for each individual. of a program like this, it really comes down to a value judgment for each individual voter and for the voters collectively at town meeting. Is this sum of money worth the benefits you get in terms of the accuracy of the vote and the privacy and the ability to cast a truly anonymous private vote? And that's a big part of the reason why our committee has recommended to tee up the issue the way we have recommended, rather than make that value judgment ourselves, sitting in a back room, put the concept in front of the town meeting and see how folks feel about it.
Yeah, but I think the other thing that, and I appreciate you recognizing it, is the possible diminution of energy and enthusiasm. I kind of like the spirited, exciting nature of a town meeting. I mean, it represents the culmination of a lot of work by different boards, issues of common interest, and, and people are going to disagree with them sometimes. I don't think that's a bad thing. I don't think anybody's trying to intimidate anybody here.
I would agree wholeheartedly, and one of our members, when, when you mentioned that, admonished me not to equate noise with enthusiasm and energy.
Eko, yeah.
That was a valid observation. And also, I think if you speak to the moderator, he would say that his observations of using e-voting on every single vote does really raise the risk of draining some energy from the room. And so, I, I think you make a very valid point, and what, what we're arguing for tonight, Mr. Hilli, is, is not...
Call me Paul, Andy.
Is not a decision as to whether the town should commit X dollars each year for the next several years, but rather $30,000, not to exceed $30,000, to do a, a test of this, to try it at one town meeting and see how people in Hingham like it. And perhaps, perhaps people would say, you know, this really does make it too quiet, or perhaps people will say, gee, you know, I am so comforted by the fact that I can vote in privacy. We don't know. You know, you have your views, and which we respect, we have our own private views. We could vote as a committee and have a committee view, but would it be of any value to anybody? And I'm not certain that it would be, quite frankly, as wonderful a committee as we have.
Yeah, but you're asking the, you're asking the town money be spent on something that, eh, might be a problem, but eh, might not be. Statistics don't show it's a problem. We don't think we have a rancorous town meeting. We think that the town moderator does a great job, both the current and past, has been able to predict the votes anyhow, even with the vote, even with the standing vote, even with the ballot vote. So, we're spending money on a non-problem.
Well, let me, you might be, be right in the sense that it may not, electronic voting may not have changed the outcome of anything, but, but if a person says to you, "I'm not going to go to town meeting because I don't want to vote against my neighbor's proposition," or "I don't want to be seen as voting in favor of this," then that is a problem. And, and it's very difficult, it's a problem. You can't deny it. You can't say, well, you shouldn't feel that way, that's the way the person feels, and each one feels somewhat differently. So, that is a problem that, that probably deserves to be considered, because enough has been said about it, I think. The government study committee did a survey that demonstrated that that is a concern for a number of people.
Of those who responded?
It was a huge response, Paul.
How many of the voters?
I can, I'll send it to you. We have it.
I mean...
I think we got over 1,000 responses to the survey. It was kind of the biggest one. Ted, do you remember the numbers?
And how many voters are there in the town of Hingham? 15,000 plus?
Well, how many you get at a town meeting, though? You get, you get on average about eight to 900, yeah. We, one of the...
But the issue you're raising is ultimately the one that we're trying to put into a framework where the town can weigh in. We aren't trying to make that judgment. Thus far, we've been allocated $5,000 of which we've spent nothing.
Good. Appreciate that.
We're asking to have, we can't, we can't tee up a pilot with no potential resource. That's the bind we're in. So, there's nothing allocated for the idea of vetting that at a town meeting and letting know that we don't know where they're potentially. So, dark squares have an experience where they have had two, they will have two pilot votes take place at no cost. Can I, can this committee represent to the town views, selectmen, that that's going to be our experience? No. So, Darren, I will be doing our best efforts as a committee to minimize the costs and hopefully keep them at the same level. Absolutely. I think the concerns you're raising are very, very valid, and that's what the town, that's the third stage that Andy referenced, which is the town experiencing this and associating a hard cost with that experience. And the room may be very, may be full of people that have your same view and say, no, this is not worth $50,000 or $70,000 or whatever that number is, but we can't create that experience and create the advantages, disadvantages without, without some...
I guess I just react to all this that, you know, and the statistics you've thrown out there or the figures are helpful, but basically what I'm, the takeaway I have here is you've got 301 towns in the Commonwealth, and seven of them have got some kind of voting, and at least one of them had a problem that warranted it. And we don't fit in that category whatsoever.
Today.
Right, and we've got, the outer limits of your figures are 1.2 million, and we just spent that on two new fire trucks that we very badly needed. And I'm reluctant to...
People that says, "I want new fire trucks."
Until their house is on fire.
But there's the...
And they'll be glad to see it.
We don't know that, Paul. That's exactly what we're trying to experience. It's like, tomorrow morning, while we both get on the bus, and you can get off the bus one stop before I do.
Or after.
After's easy, because I've got another bus, but you never know how to get off one stop before I do, because you don't know.
It, the town meeting now costs in the neighborhood of $25,000 to $30,000. If you have a special town meeting, annual cost, around probably 40, a little more. If you multiply those numbers by 16, you get to a pretty high number as well. Obviously, any kind of cost over time is going to add up, so that even, you know, if you took the, the average cost of town meeting over the past 16 years, you'd get off a fire truck, perhaps, but, and, and it, it, this can be, that's one of the issues we have. This can be argued several different ways, and quite frankly, who are we to judge, is what it comes down to. It's up, we think it's up to the town. Obviously, in the first instance, it's your job to, to make the, the first judgment, and we're trying to make it as easy as we can for all involved by not asking for a hard commitment, but for a, a pilot program, a one-time cost to, to do the pilot program, and let's see where that brings us.
I know Irma's very supportive of this.
I'm going to jump in when I'm allowed. I've been very patient.
Be patient a little bit longer. I don't want to vote on this tonight. I think I've raised some questions, and I think I'd like to digest this. I haven't seen any of this, so I'm glad we're having this discussion, and I better understand. I've, you've taken a lot of issues off the table for me, and I think if you could get the answer from Dot that it's no intrusion on us, and I think Ted, if I could ask you to talk to, to Steve when we get his input and he comes on board, then we at least eliminate potential, you know, small questions that could, could take this off the rails. I think the concept has, is a good concept. You teed it up exactly. Do the people want to pay the money to get that concept, give it some reality take, and understanding that there's a long-term cost that would come with this if we, if it goes through?
Yes.
Is that, I think that's...
That's precisely correct.
I think...
Tonight, we're talking about reduced cost for, approval of reduced cost at this year's town meeting for a pilot program at the following year's town meeting, at which people would be in a position to decide or not.
Right. Okay. Now, sorry.
Now? I was on the government study committee and worked on this, talked to a number of towns, both Wayland and a number of other towns, and also some out of the state, and Eva Marx was on our committee as well and has experienced electronic voting at some of the convocations, some of the organizations she's part of. I'm very supportive of this. I'm very enthused about it. I don't see this taking one iota of the spiritedness out of town meeting, the way that you have structured the bylaw change. You do the voice vote first. I see this helping the moderator, because then it becomes an e-vote, which takes virtually no time, or a standing vote, but if an e-vote is called for, and if this makes people comfortable in voting and coming to town meeting, it's worth the 20 or $25,000 a year that we're going to spend, and I would certainly support leasing over buying, because when we looked at it, maybe this has changed. If you lease, you get more, better equipment each year, which is lousy English, but as the technology changes, you'll get the newest equipment if the lease is set up that way, and it is getting easier and easier. I mean, think of the first cell phones or mobile phones. We had the bag phones, if anybody is that old and can remember them.
Irma, I'm insulted.
I had one. I had one, because I ran...
I still have the briefcase.
Are you old enough? I'm shocked. I thought you had, I kept mine, because when I was teaching the IT classes to show everybody...
I broke my right arm trying to lift it.
Oh, my God, those things were awful. They were like eight pounds. So, that technology, if you think about it, that has changed, this is changing. We want to hold on to open town meeting. As you all did the study, you saw more and more towns are abandoning open town meeting for a variety of reasons, one of which is you can't get people there. And part of that is because they, as Andy said, don't want to have to stand up behind, beside their neighbor or not stand up.
I object.
Okay. You can do that.
I don't believe that's the motivation of people who remain seated.
Okay. Okay, that's certainly your opinion. The ability to get people to town meeting, to facilitate the passage of town meeting through the difficult or the more exciting warrant articles, where you can have the discussion, do a standing vote, and then quickly do that second vote. And if you look at all the ballots that were standing votes or ballot votes, all, all most, most of them involve significant sums of money. Our world is getting more and more complex. The warrant articles we deal with now are much more complex and often involve much more significant sums of money than even when I started with this stuff in 2002. So, our world is changing, and it's going to change around us, and we can either be part of the change, or we can look over our shoulders as it runs over us. So, I think the trial is important. I think it's the decision of the town, do they want to do this? That's it.
Okay.
Thank you. I think I covered it.
We're going to have a debate. That's good.
Our committee was very cautious about putting numbers out there at this early stage, because we have put out our, the, 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 the , the, 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 the,
of services through them.
That's good.
That's excellent.
That's good.
That's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Are they gonna expand services so that we might enjoy some of the other ones, or...
What do you have in mind? I mean, basically, the cooperative keeps track of all sorts of recycling vendors that are out there, brings them to presentations, so town manager, DPW chiefs get to hear what kinds of things are out there. And Randy, as you know, follows through on those.
Randy is very aggressive because...
So, basically, we learn about new things, we're able to take advantage of the ones that make sense to us, but being part of the cooperative doesn't require us to use their contracts. You can, we can always negotiate separately.
Okay. Because he does, he takes advantage. And, I mean, he's recycling stuff there that I never thought you could recycle, so...
No, the latest one is the negotiating to get $100 per ton for all textile recycling. That came through the cooperative.
Okay. Paul?
Me.
What's the story with Styrofoam? Why can't that be recycled?
Because it is, there are very few places that will take it. It is huge in volume, light in weight. Shipping costs make it prohibitive to ship it to where it can be recycled.
Isn't it the...
It is, however, frustration for most of us here in town.
Isn't it the chemicals that you need to break it down? Because I looked this up one time, and it was like eh...
It has to be melted down, can't really be well reused. It is unfortunately a product that causes problems in our world. Probably will be start to be used less is probably the way it's gonna end up, but...
Okay. All right. Jim, do you have a question? If you, you have to come up. Jim, you oughta come up. Sorry.
A question from the audience.
A question from there. I wanna give you, just tell us, tell everybody...
Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street. No, I just didn't hear what you said, it was so light and bulky. You couldn't recycle it.
I'm saying that the shipping costs to ship it to where it can be broken down are become very prohibitive.
Styrofoam.
Styrofoam, sorry.
It sounded like that. Okay. Could you say a couple words about sole source? I mean, single stream, does it affect, some people are using it, I guess, privately now, right? Some private collectors?
Residents of town who hire a private hauler to pick up their waste in their recycling do use single-stream recycling because that's what the haulers offer. Our committee was charged, three years ago now, maybe, with looking at what would be the most sort of effective way of increasing recycling here in town. And given the improvements that we had just done to our transfer station, to have it be a sorting transfer station, the cost to redo our transfer station to make it single-stream would never offset any benefits from single-stream.
Right.
Correct. Yes, no, materials, when we sort them and sell them as sorted materials, we get much more than if we were to give mixed recyclables to a processing center. In fact, we'd have to pay them to take it rather than them paying us.
Sure. Makes sense. Got it.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
Okay.
Let's see. Who's, is it? Your turn.
My turn. Okay. I move that we recommend that the town extend the term of the intermunicipal agreement for regional cooperation in the provision of solid waste and recycling services for the South Shore Recycling Cooperative for an additional term through June 30, 2018, and further. Will the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute and deliver an amended intermunicipal agreement, a copy of which is on file in the office of the town clerk, to affect the extension of the term and other changes set forth therein?
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you very much. Last, last item I just wanna make up. Those of you who didn't hear this last week, but it's important in view of the financial discussions we just had concerning, Standard and Poor's issued a report on the rating of the town, and Ted referenced that at the end of Selectmen's meeting last week, but I wanna state it again. They reaffirmed our AAA long-term rating on the Hingham General Obligation Bonds, and this is through, an assessment through 2013, so I commend the town administrator on this work, and it's available for those of you who'd like to see it. It says some very nice things about the town of Hingham.
And this'll be going up on our website.
Thank you. It'll be on the website. Okay. Again, March 2 is our town forum, 2 o'clock, here in the San Bone Auditorium, and with that...
What else will we talk to besides Warren Towne though? Do you know yet?
The town forum?
Yes.
We'll have a review of the town's current financial situation, including its current operating budget. We'll look at our existing fund balance, our debt levels, and there'll be a presentation on the work of the Aquarian Water Company Acquisition Study Committee.
Wonderful.
Yeah. Okay. Is that, okay, Carol? Yeah, great. Okay. We've got one vote.
I'll move to appoint Adam White to the Scholarship Fund Committee for a three-year term, expiring in 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you and good night. Stay safe. I understand we're gonna get something different tomorrow. It's called rain.
Oh.
Better than snow. That's right. Good night, everybody.